She was the judge, Danny. This is. And she's the judge on the basement last year.
Since you're here, public hearing. For the, yeah, the hour of the tax rate.
Oh, yeah.
I even found it. If I can find it. I have, I have to get up and dust it. Dust it and get my.
Oh, that shit.
That how you wipe them down? Has it ever been my wife?
Do it.
Got seven o'clock. Call to order the city council meeting here at 600 West Cleveland Boulevard, August 22nd, 2016, 7:00 PM. All rise for the invocation, please.
Lord, we'd like to give you thanks for this beautiful day. We ask you to keep our citizens in your, under your, under your eyes, your prayers, and your thoughts as some have passed on throughout the weekend. We ask you to give strength to our teachers that come into another school year. Ask you to watch over our children as they go to and from school. We ask you to look over all our community as they work hard to strive to make this a better place and our local public works. People, please watch over them. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring us to item three, one employee recognition, the Aquatic Center, Sarah.
Good evening. I would like to recognize an employee of the Aquatic Center. Her name is Mindy Hook. If you'll come up here, Mindy. And I want to kind of look at both of you all when I say this. Mindy always puts a positive, always has a positive attitude and an aim-to-please approach. Mindy truly enjoys her job and it shows in her daily tasks. She knows the importance of following the rules and she keeps, and she helps to guide her fellow guards. She always is respectful of her superiors, coworkers, and patrons. We are happy to recognize Mindy Cook for doing an exceptional job as the lifeguard at the Aquatic Center. Thank you, Mindy. You're amazing. I wrote it down because I didn't want to forget.
Good job.
And I got her a $50 gift card.
Sweet.
And we hope to get her back next season.
You have photo over there.
She happens to be the daughter of our superintendent.
Oh. Good job. This is going to bring us to item four one, which is House of Authority, which the mayor fills these vacancies. Right now, what I'm looking at, just to let everybody know, we have expired terms of Lily Kendall, Mary Ann Greer, Dennis Peacock, Jenny McClellan in the vacant position. And when I'm looking at that, Mary, we're going to go with Rose Weldman to replace Ms. Greer. We appreciate her service as a resident there. And the vacant position will be filled by Ms. Virginia Buffkin and Ms. Kendall will go back, Mr. Peacock will go back, and Ms. McClellan will go back. Let Ms. Gonzalez know that. Appreciate it. This is going to bring us to item five, our consent agenda. All of the following items, the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. And that brings to item five one and five T.
Well.
I'll make the motion when we approve the consent agenda.
Second the motion.
Second.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. Item six is public hearings, first being a public hearing on the 2016-year tax rate and I declare the public hearing open. Sylvia?
Mayor Council, the tax rate that is being proposed by the staff due to the equivalent of the effective tax rate, the effective tax rate is that tax rate, which would do the same amount of money.
As last year's tax rate. Last year's tax rate was .680354. The effective tax rate this year is .688655. That was a little Mexican dance Eric played there. The effective rates changed a little bit because values went down in all three counties. We previously had a value of 531 million. This year, the values are 524 million. A great deal of those is property that's in protest and continues in protest. So the alternate is the rollback rate, which is the effective rate plus eight percent, which would make the tax rate .711%. That's not what staff's proposing. We have said we're going to keep the tax rate steady and the effective tax rate does that.
Is that all you have?
That's it.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments by the council?
No.
No. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing none, then this particular public hearing is closed. Next item is a public hearing on the operating budget for fiscal year 2016 to 2017.
This is a toughie. It's, it, it gets harder and harder every year with that stable tax rate. We've got a lot of work in front of us. The proposed 1617 budget highlight is a couple of bullet points. Number one is, again, we've chosen to keep the tax rate steady at .68 cents. We have the proposed charter amendment by the voters that requires three percent of the general fund. Right now, that's about $240,000. So that's an additional $240,000 expense from last year we had not planned on. And then healthcare costs have gone up about 12%, and that is pretty standard. So what we're having to do with the employees is eliminate the employer-paid dental and vision plan. That will remain a voluntary benefit, but it will be on the bar, on the part of the employees. The other part is, how do we cut costs on the healthcare front? Well, we cut costs by streamlining, and you can streamline by having one or two vendors and not requiring staff to spend an inordinate amount of time. So we're going to go back and reduce, I believe right now we have seven to 10 different vendors on a variety of voluntary benefits. We're going to stream that to about one or two. We have partnered with Roland Barretta Insurance, who was our broker, who went out for RFP. The lowest insurance did still come back as Texas Municipal League, so that will still be the insurance that we have. The, it is a high deductible plan. It is a $3,000 deductible. So what we have done is we've purchased basically what is considered stopgap insurance for the employees. All, all intents and purposes, the healthcare costs, taking the dental vision and streamlining that gap coverage, it's about a four percent increase from last year's costs, and that's been incorporated into all of the department budgets. There is the recreation of the park and mowing division. As you're aware, last year, we tried to outsource that. We had some pluses and some minuses on that. We're going to go back to a right-of-way division, and you'll see that in the next couple of slides in the budgets. You do have a budget book in front of you. It'll be posted this afternoon or this evening, late this evening, on the city's website. I tried to do it a little bit different this year. We gave you each and every department's line item budget, every expenditure detail. So hopefully that, you know, leads away with the where are they hiding the money kind of thing. General fund revenues equal $9.6 million, 9.645. Expenditures, 9.640. So that's a $5,000 savings. We are cutting it very thin. That $5,000, if it comes to fruition, will end up falling to the fund balance as well. That eliminates almost all of the outside engineering. We had more than a million dollars of engineering and outside consulting expense this past year. It creates a maintenance superintendent that's going to handle our lift stations, our pump stations, and all of our building maintenance. It hires one additional fire personnel that will act as an inspector slash assistant chief. Again, there's that recreation of the parks and mowing, and it does do a temporary elimination of the transfer from the water and wastewater fund. Every year, the city had gotten into the habit of transferring about $750,000 from the water sewer fund back into the general fund. It was really a shell game because then we ended up paying debt service of 794,000 from different pots of money. So just to streamline that, we're going to pay the debt of the water sewer fund out of the water sewer fund. Novel idea. The other debt falls into, you'll see it in your line item budgets. There, of course, is the organizational chart. What I presented to you, I could have presented the budget to you by cost centers, cost accounting. That gets very, very difficult because the water sewer fund, for example, pays a little bit of finance, pays a little bit of development services, pays a little bit of the meter readers, pays a little bit of the public work staff. So I'm going to give it to you by division, and these are the major divisions. We have public safety, which encompasses police, fire, emergency operations, EMS, the harbor, development services, which is all what I call horizontal and vertical development, community enrichment, which is basically all the fun stuff, IT, and then obviously finance, the money piece. So the budget book shows each and every division broken out by an expense category. The city secretary budget is $205,000, and that includes a line item for council discretionary. That is where you guys get the monies for the civic organizations who come up. That's where we pay the Fourth of July, those kinds of things. As the Fourth of July gets bigger, it qualifies for a hot fund reimbursement. So we're looking at taking that out of council discretionary in the next couple of years and paying that out of the hotel motel. That'll free up about $20,000 or $25,000. The city manager fund is $250,000. And the city attorney, while he is his own separate division in the organization, he's paid from a cost center, basically. So he does a little bit of work for municipal court. He does a little bit of work in my division, and that's included in, in my line item. Most of the work he does is for the city secretary's office. So Allen's costs and other attorneys that we have working for the city are spread throughout those divisions. I explained that public safety includes police, fire, emergency management, and ambulance. Police, 38 staff. Eric has 39 in his little book. One of them is emergency management, so we're, we're still teaching him that emergency management is its own little division. Administration for PD is 889,976. Investigations, a little over 500,000. Patrol, 1.1 million, and dispatch is 351,000. That's a $3.1 million budget total, and that comprises a probably fifth of the entire $16 million city budget. Staff for the fire department are 14 staff, including the one additional proposed, and that is a department budget of $908,000. So the public safety is by far the largest expense within the city, followed closely by public works. Emergency management, we do only have one person in that division that is $128,000. However, we have contractual obligations for the seagate, some supplies, water, food, shelter kind of supplies for emergency services. The ambulance service is a contractual agreement. It's going to go up every year. That's part of the contract. This year, it is $138,000. Animal control, two personnel, 117. Siri, Siri keeps asking me about, about my budget. Siri keeps asking me about, about my budget. Animal control has two people, $117,000. This year, what you're going to see in your budget book are goals for every division, and you'll see how their budgets relate to those goals. Finance, we have had a very, very difficult time with the conversion of the new software. What that has translated into is an inordinate number of calls and customer complaints. So, we've had to establish a temporary call center, and we've had to establish temporary personnel to come in and help us try to get over the hump. I don't expect us over the hump till about October. So, if you're getting a lot of complaints, please just bear with us a few more months. Accounts payable, accounts receivable is four people. It's 233.5. The utility business office has six people at a salary of $150,384. And meter readers, three staff, which is one additional, 75,691. We do have a floater in the meter readers. I mean, I know we have a good portion of automated meter reading, but inevitably, we have complaints about a meter, so we need to be able to have that person be able to be dispatched immediately.
How many electronic meters do we have up and running?
The city is, I would say, half converted, Donna?
Were they all made by the same type, or they're two variable companies?
They're all made by the same.
With the same program, or?
Yes.
Information technology, the IT division. Also, goals are improved internal customer service. Jeff, like Allen, is one of these internal funds. He provides mostly support to internal city departments. We're going to continue to expand our online presence with our bill pay and all of our information that's available. And then the goal is to connect all city offices. Believe it or not, if you're at the library, you can't see what's at City Hall. If you're at the aquatic center, you can't see what's at City Hall. So, we're getting there. We've had some hurdles to go through. The council approved some money a few years back out of a bond sale, and we're still working off of that money. So, there are two staff in there, and that budget is a little shy of $150,000. Community enrichment is the, what I call the fun stuff. I don't know if Sarah considers it fun during the busy season, but it's comprised of our social service and our fun organizations, library, civic center, aquatic center, park activities, when we've got movies at the park, things like that, and the senior center. The goals for that include continuing our partnership with K-COS at the senior center, improved access at the library, and those expanded amenities at community park, which unfortunately have already been the target of vandals. The library has three staff, a little shy of $162,000. The senior center is really just Pam, and she splits her time between the senior center and also the front utilities office and the call center. The senior center is going to have a reduction of services in the van service this year. We're providing redundant assistance that Medicare, Medicaid, and other service providers provide, and it has become a liability for us. They love Pam. Pam is physically not capable of doing it anymore. She had somebody fall on her not too long ago. The drives back and forth to the doctor's offices in Corpus Christi has just become into too great of a liability. We have about 11 people that we serve, between seven and 11 people that we serve, so we're going to try to help them find alternate arrangements for transportation. The aquatic center has two full-time staff. We've moved Manuela, who had been the, basically, community enrichment, now Sarah Lee's position, to full-time staff with 22 seasonal staff. The aquatic center has expected a loss of $351,500, which is still a lot more than I care to see on any given day. That does not include the debt service. If I included the debt service, that loss would be closer to half a million dollars. The debt service is absorbed in the general fund. So, in your booklets, you're going to see a transfer from the general fund to the aquatic center of 351,000 that will cover that loss. Now, just to give you an idea, that is almost the exact cost of an entire parks department. The civic center has four staff at a budget of $274,290. The civic center breaks even on the city books every year, because the municipal development district contributes $250,000. If Sarah Lee starts breaking a profit or breaking her projections of $140,000, then that MDD contribution lowers. You're going to see them on a future slide. You will not have a detail, because you have not approved their budgets. They have to go through their boards. They've got to do public hearings for their own budgets, both the MDD and the crime board, and then their budgets will be incorporated into our budget. Then we move on to development services, which is what I call the unsexy part of city business, but it is the part that makes the city run. It is comprehensive planning, it's public works, and it's building. The majority of the revenue that pays for development services is user fees on the building side. Public works is paid mostly through the water sewer fund, and comp planning is a general fund expense. So, that's why I'm saying, if I tried to show it to you by cost centers, it would get very confusing, so I opted to do it by division. Hopefully, that makes it a little bit more understandable. We have consolidated streets, drainage, and water, and this is led by SID. Streets and drainage is always together, because if you weren't aware, streets serve as a drainage way. Streets have a certain capacity to take water on and off, so those two are always partnered. What we've added is water under that, just to do a little bit further consolidation in public works. We do have that superintendent for the pump and the lift stations, and then we have reduced that general fund dependency from the water sewer fund. Parks and Rec, there's that department that we've been talking about. That's seven people, $388,000. Public health, which is mosquito control, I don't know if you're aware, but the mosquito medicine is very expensive, $45,000. Facilities of public works, $101,000. Streets and drainage is a little shy of a million dollars. And I will tell you, that is not all-encompassing. You're about to have the bond package be presented to you at the next council meeting under a capital improvement plan, that you're going to get to see where all of the material and supplies come for from those streets. The general fund will receive a subsidy from that bond money to pay for the labor to do the water sewer and street improvements. So, you'll see that in the budget book as a line item transfer. The building division has three people in it, and that is a hundred, a little shy of $160,000. I'm not sure what building is. That's some, oh, comp planning. That should be comprehensive planning, not building. Water, this is the water sewer fund. This is the debt service. That 794,000 is what pays for the debt in the water sewer fund. Previously, that was under a different, you know, it was under a different coconut. Water and sewer administration, which is really Fernando, a portion of SID's salary. It really comes to three FTEs, and that is a little shy of $243,000. Water production, this is a purchase of water. This is when we have issues with the meter, that it's not reading correctly, that it's underreading more than it's overreading, believe it or not. This is that line item. We have water purchases a little shy of one and a half million dollars. So, the city has to pay for every single drop of water that we quote-unquote "use." The water distribution system is a little shy of $257,000. Water and sewer collection, 500 and almost $30,000. And treatment of that water sewer down at the treatment plant is a little shy of $489,000. So, the water sewer fund is about a $4.4 million fund. So, the harbor fund is, the water and the harbor fund both are what are considered enterprise funds. Their moneymakers are supposed to contribute to general fund subsidy, as well as be self-maintaining through user fees. The goals of the harbor fund this year include completion of the repairs to the pier and the lights. I will remind you, we have depositions set for August 29th, mediation set for September 2nd, and a court date of November 7th. We have some very big issues with lease boundaries down there. We hope to resolve them this year. We must complete the seagrass mitigation by the end of the year. That's the project Bel Air Environmental is helping us with. And obviously, to continue to seek development opportunities. Right now, we only have one staff in that fund, and that is the harbor master. That budget is $250,000, of which 69,000 gets transferred to the general fund. Now, it's not really a transfer. It's a transfer to the general fund to pay for engineering services of environmental projects. The harbor had costs of over half a million dollars in environmental projects this last year. Well, the year that we're in, that the general fund had to absorb. The hotel motel fund is doing well. Revenues of about $260,000. We do have the chamber of commerce contract at 175,000. Advertising, a little shy of 6,600. We have community and special events of 43,500. And there's that fireworks show that is coming out of discretionary right now that I'd like to move over to the hotel motel of $20,000, and that leaves a balance of $14,201. This is what we talked about. The municipal development district is part of the half-cent sales tax. Their sole purpose is to pay for the bonds that built the aquatic center and the civic center. There's an inter-local agreement between the city and the MDD that says the city will handle all of the aquatic center debt in operations. So, the municipal development district helps us with the civic center deficit. And again, that's about $225,000 to $250,000. You will see those budgets when you adopt them in September. Crime control and prevention, same thing. Half-cent sales tax. Their largest contribution, probably 85% of their budget, is contributed to the police department for various grants. They pay for the SRO officer, they pay for a portion of E911, a variety of vehicles. Their budget is also due to be adopted in September. This will be the first year you have an actual capital improvement plan. That's part of the workshops that we had, those two Saturdays I had you here very early. You will see that on August 29th, as well as the complete budget all tied together. Altogether, the budget is a little over 16 and a half million dollars. Questions?
Members of the council, have any questions or comments? Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing none?
It was so long that I wasn't questioning.
Okay.
It was all still with, with the utilities and water bill and the, the electronic reading device. I don't understand how that works.
Would you mind coming up to the mic, please? Give your, give your name and address.
My name's, my name's Ron Hale. I live at 250 South 13th, apartment 324. The, my question is, five years ago, and this might not seem like much to you, but I was paying $50 on my utilities. Today, I'm paying $70 on my utilities. That's a lot, because I have a fixed income, like many people. But, I keep having problems with the water department, and we have, it appears to me, because I didn't dig around or anything, we have one single unit that reads the water usage for all the units in, in the, in where I'm at. And then I guess they divide that. Well, I don't use near as much water as my neighbor down the way does. You know, she, she waters her yard and has all this beautiful foliage. It's just, there's something wrong in the system that we got going right now that, that, it, it's, it's not reading it right. Myself, I live on social security, and for two years running, I have not got any cost of living. And that, what that adds up to is the very poorest people in, not only in the community, but in the country are paying taxes for, for things that, why should we be paying taxes for them? You know? We shouldn't be paying the taxes. We should get our, our, I'm rambling now, so I'll get them. But, but the, the water company and, and the garbage, where I'm at, we get paid, we're charged for the commercial, is that correct? We're, we're being charged for commercial garbage, you know? And there's, I don't know how many people that, that are getting paid that commercial garbage rate, so that the garbage people are collecting more than they should be. You know, we're individuals. We have to walk all the way to the garbage can and dump it. And I guess that's my whine.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, then, then this particular public hearing is closed. Item six-three is a public hearing on demolition of buildings. We have six particular buildings. And item one is property located 227 North Atlantic, described as lots nine through 13, block 684.
Mayor, council. This property is owned by H. Taman Senior. Apparently, this person has passed away. We've contacted family members and tried to see if anyone had an interest. I don't have responded. The property currently has a 2007 tax bill in the amount of $10,803. Well, that's the appraised value. The current amount of taxes owed is $4,919.61. Water account has been closed since 2009. No signs of anyone taking an interest whatsoever in the property. The existing structure is collapsing upon itself. The exterior walls are missing. Portions of the wood studs and walls are rotted, in very bad shape. The Building Board of Standards and Appeals held a public hearing on the property, and the board unanimously recommended that the council approve demolition of the structure.
And no responses by any of the owners?
None of the family members have come forward. I have discussed this with one of the relatives, I think of the Taman Junior, and they had no interest whatsoever in keeping up the property, doing anything with it.
Okay. Item two is property located 229 North Atlantic, being lots five through eight, block 684.
The property owners, Lane Young and Bonnie Keen Young, were sent registered letters and returned the seat to substandard building in 2014. Due to the time lapse between when this originally was set out, we felt it was better to do a current search and update on it, make sure that nothing had changed. The property, 2015 appraised value was 27,432. The property taxes were last paid for 2007 tax bill, and the current tax is over $8,600, or $264. Structure is collapsing upon itself. It's basically a storage shed. It looks like somebody has been throwing down sleeping material and sleeping there at times. We've never seen anybody there, but it is in a bad situation and a blight on the community.
And, and no responses?
We have not received any responses.
Okay. Item three is 428 North 11th, being lot nine, block 208.
The property owners were sent a letter, a written receipt requested. The first time was in 2013. Again, this property, due to the length of time, we started over again, and make sure that there wasn't any changes in it. We have not found any person to come forward with it and take responsibility. The appraised value is $2,825, with land value, there's nothing that has listed for improvements on the property. The water acc- The water account has been closed since two thousand thirteen, and there is an outstanding bill of forty-four dollars and sixteen cents. This is remnants of, apparently, a mobile home structure that had been burnt out, and the only things left there is strictly the frame and the skeleton of the building. The Board of Standards and Appeals held their public hearing and unanimously recommended city council to approve removal of the structure.
Okay. Item four is eleven twelve South Rife, being lot thirteen, block seven thirty-five.
This property was a fire burnout structure. Most of the inside is completely gutted. The roof is missing most of it. There's no record or return receipt. We've sent numerous letters to the owner of the property. They have received a return receipt back from a daughter of Mr. Caswell, signed the receipt, and one from the son of Mr. Caswell. We've received no communication whatsoever back from them. The property has an appraised value of fifteen thousand six hundred and improvements of forty-three thousand on the property tax list. The last paid on the tax bill was two thousand twelve. The current amount owed is three thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents. The water account was closed in October two thousand fifteen, with a balance of two hundred and seventy-four dollars still owed. The roof has deteriorated to a point where the piece is missing. The roof is missing, and it's collapsing into itself. There is signs that a vagrant or someone has been at times residing or going into the property.
Okay. Next is two twenty-nine South Thirteenth, lot four, block seven fifty-one.
This property is a storage shed. We have received a voluntary consent to demolish the property, so therefore, we would not require any action by the city council to have it removed.
Okay. Then item six, four oh five North Railroad, lot fourteen, block six eighteen.
This property, four oh five North Railroad Street, apparently, it was at one time used as commercial-type property. The board has made recommendation to, or has decided to table this until we do a further investigation and what we can do with cleanup of the property. So this is going to be requested to be tabled.
Okay. So items one through four, are they items that you need action on from the council? Okay. Are there any questions or comments by the council? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments about any one of these items?
Due to, we need, looking like it is a commercial piece of property, we may need to do a asbestos report and get in and see if there's any
Chemicals.
Other contaminants on the property that would possibly take a little bit of time to mitigate. So we need to do a more thorough investigation.
That's our issue, a city staff issue, not determining whether asbestos report was required or not, before we recommend it is to.
Anyone else have any comments? If not, then this public hearing is closed, and this is an action item for the council.
This one is.
Thank you, sir.
What is the favor of council on item six-four minus item five?
I think five and six.
Five and six.
Well, actually, on the agenda, you only have one through four on the action.
To consider for action.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion that we authorize cities staff to the demolition of these structures.
Second the motion?
Oh, first say aye.
Aye.
Next is item six-five, and I would ask that the council pass on this until your next meeting. The application for annexation was not proper. Under the statute, did not require the, or did not include the required statutory items. They finally received a proper application today. However, the statute provides that the council cannot act on it until it's been, until five days after it's been submitted, so
Couldn't table that.
I would ask that you just pass on it and put on the next agenda.
Item seven.
Do you have to make a motion to table it?
If you'd like to. You can table if you want to, or we just pass on it. Go ahead, and you can make a motion to table.
I just kind of wondered we had to.
Well, go ahead, that's fine.
Just table it till next meeting.
Okay, I make a motion that we table, agenda item six.
Six-five.
Six.
What, both on six-five?
Six-five.
Is the public hearing here?
Second, we have a second?
Yeah.
Oh, first say aye.
Aye.
Sylvia, item seven.
It seems like all the holidays are fallen on council Mondays. We will have this meeting on August twenty-second, August twenty-ninth, and the next council meeting would have been September fifth. However, that is Labor Day. So we have the option to schedule September sixth, which is a Tuesday, or to reschedule it to the September twelfth, which is the second Monday of September.
I make a motion we reschedule the city council meeting to September sixth.
Second the motion?
Oh, first say aye.
Aye.
Mayor and council, this next item is a, it's been a discussion item the staff and I have been telling you about for the last couple of years. We have an extraordinarily large amount of liens, whether they are weed lot liens, whether they are demolition liens, whether they are street assessments, et cetera, et cetera. Bookkeeping, questionable. Record keeping, questionable. Liens only stay on for ten years and a hundred and eighty days, and you have to refile the lien. A vast majority of these liens have never been refiled, so the liens are not valid. So part of this discussion in our finance and accounting section, when we sit with our auditor, will be how do we get these off the balance sheet? They're showing as an asset out there as a collectible, but in reality, if we had to defend these in court, I'm afraid we would not be able to defend them. So this first swath of four thousand dollars is to release those liens. We do have filing fees at each one of the courthouses. Is to release those liens that are over twelve, ten, twelve years old in some cases, that the city has, one, either never collected, or two, has no record of ever collecting, or three, never refiled. So the liens are not valid anyway. I don't know exactly how much it's going to take to release everything out there. We will be coming back as we do further investigation.
Sylvia, let me ask you a question. Rather than releasing these at the courthouse, which is going to cost you a bunch, can't you just wipe them off your books?
Well, that four thousand dollars is for this first set. Yes, it is going to cost us quite a bit. I think we've calculated about thirty thousand dollars worth of just filing fees. The problem is, we're either going to pay it in a fee, or we're going to pay it in staff time, because every time a title company calls us, we have to go do a research, and we stop what we're doing, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it is, you know, pay now, pay later. We're trying to take it one bite at a time. In the next fiscal, you'll see some dollar amounts. It is about thirty thousand dollars in filing fees. Not to mention the uncollectible.
So on this one, do you have a handle of which ones will be, or are you just going to search the books to see the liens, or?
We are, we are doing the ones that are over ten years old. That's
That's where you're going to start at?
Yes. That's the ones we're going to start off. We know for sure those aren't valid anyway. The time limit has expired. This will cut down on the number that you see up here asking to be forgiven, honestly. The next big chunk that you're going to see is, we still have a lot of street assessments. And I think I told the council, year one, that some of those streets were not built to standard, and they're already collapsing. And it's incumbent upon us to not have a lien on a piece of property where what we built or should have built isn't even there anymore in some cases. So that's going to be our next set, but it is a, it is a rather large number.
I have a question. What about the ones that have already paid that?
They've already paid.
What are we going to?
Those street assessments paid bond obligations, and the bonds will be paid for this year. This is the final year. So had the bonds not been paid for, I would have said you can't release the amount, because we told the bondholders that we had a money coming in to pay that bond, but the bonds have since been paid for. So I can't go back and fix the past. I can just, from here forward, that's all I can do. And all I would recommend the council to do, that was several million dollars of street assessments. You guys had about five series of issues.
Yes, my question is, for someone like, for instance, I had already paid mine, and then I hear that some of them are going to be forgiven because they hadn't paid.
And they want their money back.
Can I come back and say, hey, I want my money back? That's just my question.
That's going to be an item for the council to decide. The, what we could present to you, too, is do in a way with the interest, at least, because some of these liens had negative amortization. They grew instead of staying at the rate that was amount. I mean, the compound interest is horrendous. Usually, the statutes say you can only charge half a percent of whatever you paid for interest on debt to recoup. Cities aren't supposed to make money off of those things. They're supposed to just collect what it was to pay for. We had a high interest rate at a particular point in time, so seven percent compounds very quickly. And so you'll see debt that was four thousand dollars, that's now almost sixty thousand dollars over the course of years. That's not real money that's going to be collectible on some of those properties that are worth two thousand and four thousand dollars in some cases. So we'll take a look and see, at least remove the interest and penalties, and see what that number comes out to be. It is a matter of equity and fairness. I completely understand.
That's what I would be, you know, inclined to do, rather than just totally riding it off and have, you know, open up the can of worms there for people coming up.
You had five, about five issues. The first two issues, people paid very well. It's issue three, four, and five, that very, very little in the way of what actually paid the debt down. So what ended up happening is a general fund subsidized and paid that debt.
So you need a motion to allow
Yes. Yes, for an amount not to exceed four thousand.
We're looking at ten years past, far.
Correct.
I make a motion that we authorize cities staff to release the lien on properties with the amount not to exceed four thousand, and we're starting with ten years back, correct?
Yes.
Second the motion?
Oh, first say aye.
Aye.
You bring aside item nine-one.
This is Dredget Environmental. You guys did a rather large expense to clear up decades of sludge that was built up at the wastewater treatment plant. There is a small change order of thirty-eight thousand dollars, small in terms of how much work they did out there. This is actually additional.
Are they done?
Yes. So this is mostly disposal and hauling costs.
So that's just a change order?
Yes, that's the one and only change order. To be honest, I expected to see a whole lot, because they severely underbid that job.
Does this mean they won't be back?
They may not be back.
They have true numbers.
Well, I make a motion that we authorize change order number one at the wastewater treatment plant for thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Oh, first say aye.
Aye.
I wanted to show you a quick picture of what I'm talking about. At the height of the storm, this picture's in your budget book. At the height of the storm, so there's, these are the manholes that you'll see infiltration come into, right? It's coming in. The clay is broken around. You'll have infiltration from the top and the sides, et cetera. So sand and things gets into those racetracks. This was at one of our storms. I mean, it's full. We are full. There's nowhere else for that to go. There's a, there's some better pictures I can send you. I don't want to ruin your dinner, but what Dredget did is they came in and they took all of the sand and sludge and cloths and dirt and jewelry and everything that gets flushed down the toilet and goes down our drains. They came in, took that out, and they really gained, we've gained about thirty percent capacity in the plant that we did not have before.
Do we filter any of that stuff, Sylvia, or does it just run straight through?
There's a, there's a screen, but we should have a series of screen. And according to Robert Price, he's been asking for decades. We just didn't put them in.
Right.
We'll have screens now, and they will catch those gold teeth and bracelets and all that other good stuff that Robert happily brings to City Hall, you know, a couple times a week to show off. But, you know, people flush rags and things as well. It might make it down your plumbing system, but it ends up at our treatment plant.
Does it have different phases? Like, is it like a cloth filter, or?
I wouldn't be.
Just like a metal mesh screen?
It's a, from what I understand, it's a metal mesh screen.
Our public safety, correct?
Correct. Mayor, we're going to ask you and the council to table item twelve-one to the next council meeting.
Second the motion?
First say aye.
Eric, you're up, Brian.
Yes, Mayor, twelve-two, just police department stats. You will remember that last week I gave other stats. This is for July of two thousand sixteen. The calls were up quite a bit from the year previous, but traffic stops, stuff like that remain steady or down a little bit. No major highlights on complaints or recognitions right there. Recognizations were up to ten, but we kind of fluctuate within that realm. Highlights by division, we received, of course, the letter of appreciation from an outsider. Recognition for Sergeant Anders, if you will remember, he just retired. He was forced to retire, and we wished him well and off, and we're still real close with him. In fact, people ask about the car show, will he still be involved? And he's planning on that as well. The Toys R' Cops for Tots Car Show, he wants to keep that going. A couple more recognitions for staff that are explained there in detail. We had eight arrests for drugs, seven sex offender compliance checks. Pretty much, the numbers are consistent month to month on those. They're going down to investigations. We're making a little bit of ground, if you remember, on the missing girl case, Robles, from nineteen eighty-nine. I can't talk too much about that, but I will tell you, we're hoping that we will have some more information soon. Hoping. We're optimistic on that. We put on PIT and EVOC training. PIT, if you have seen cops recently, you will see that cops across the nation use the PIT procedure. PIT, if you have seen cops recently, you will see that cops across the nation use the PIT procedure. Pretty much not used in Texas very well at all. It's starting to make its way in, and we're the first ones to bring it in in South Texas, basically because of that bad pursuit we had in Portland a couple of years back. Training's holding steady, about five hundred and four hours of training delivered last month. And nothing major in any of the other divisions for the month of July. This report will be published in its entirety tomorrow on our website as well.
Good job. Thank you all. Eric, I want to thank you too for that video, the gentleman, he's in our phone.
Oh, okay.
That's very good.
Yeah, he He wasn't, he wasn't real happy that day. No, he, he said that our female officer had called him crazy, according to what his friend had told him. But the friend, actually, I later learned, the friend said that he was crazy to the officer. And just, I guess, things got out of control. He did not appreciate it and got upset. I'm just glad he didn't take it out on my little bright, beautiful piggy.
That's what I was
That would have really hurt me deeply.
Hopefully it gives you better ideas. I hope not. Thank you, Eric. This is going to bring us to item thirteen, our citizen comments. Floor's now open. You have three minutes. Please state your name, address, and whatever you would like to discuss. Up to the mic, please.
My name is Carol Salinas. I'm a resident of Beranzas Pass on South Eleventh Street. And I, since citizens comments has been moved to the end of the meeting, I hope that maybe this would be a good time that you could explain that I've been told citizens can comment on any item on the agenda. On this agenda, it says citizens comments not to be about an item on the agenda. And anyone like myself also, looking at that thinks, well, you don't want to hear what we have to say about what you're going to act on tonight. But I have had it explained to me that anyone can comment on any item. So if you would take a chance maybe and explain that to everybody. And also the budget, mosquito control, costly item, but the city has been real good about spraying. When we need it, we probably will soon. City of Corpus Christi earlier in the year said they were going to hold back on spraying. They didn't think it did that much good, but they've had a lot of West Nile virus cases reported this year. I don't know for sure, but just watching the news, I'm going to guess they've had more this year than they have. So I think that right there, no facts, but just a guess, spraying does make a difference. I know it does in my neighborhood when they go by. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I would like to clarify Carol's comment. I did speak to her earlier, and we've had, we have had some folks comment about citizens comments being toward the end. And I have explained that citizens comments are for those items, not on the agenda, because I can't respond. If they have, or the council can't respond. If they have a question on an item that is on the agenda, they absolutely can have the floor and have a discussion while you're discussing it, so that way it leads to what the vote should or could possibly potentially be. I explained that it's been moved to keep us on track, so that what was happening is we were discussing items that were up earlier or later on the agenda, and so really, quite frankly, talking out of turn, maybe making a decision before the vote actually got taken. So just trying to bring a little bit of order. It is not intended at all to stop people from commenting. In fact, if you sign up, happy to have you comment. So we're going to just try to bring a little bit of order to it.
Carol Salinas again, I'm sorry. Livestream can be helpful, but it's only helpful if everybody, including the citizen, speaks into the microphone. When I miss a meeting, I try real hard to listen on livestream. If not live, then come back later.
Right.
But there's a lot, a lot of times that this official recording is not recorded, because people do not speak into the mic.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? Yes, sir.
My name's Ron Hale. I live at two fifty South Thirteenth Street, apartment three twenty-four. Yocum Street, it has schools, hospitals, old folks home. The buses go down through there too fast. The police go down there too fast. Local people have found that they can cut around and go through on Yocum going fast. Now we've got kids walking those streets, and they walk, they walk with the traffic for some reason. And, and it's, it's not, it's not a safe place for these kids. It's not a safe place for anybody walking when, when people aren't obeying the, the speed limit, which is twenty-five miles an hour. The police don't seem to do anything about it, and I'm not there watching all the time, so I don't know. But the school buses, if the school bus is late, he will take off and, and be going forty miles an hour down Yocum, and that's not right, you know? We could put an extra stop sign in that place, cut that out, because everybody'd have to slow down for the stop signs. Or else we could just give them a bunch of tickets. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hale.
We'll focus some efforts over there, council, sir, to, to check on speeders and monitor their traffic. And I also have a way that I can monitor the officer's speed while they are working as well, and I can look into that as well.
Thank you, Eric. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? If not, that'll close our citizen comments. It'll bring us to item fourteen one, executive session. Council is going to recess to executive session to discuss the following items pursuant to chapter five five one of Texas Government Code. Item fourteen A, five five one point oh seventy-one, consultation with city attorney over garbage collection. Fourteen B, five five one point oh seventy-one, consultation with city attorney at area business center. Item fourteen C, five five one point oh seventy-one, consultation with the city attorney with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. That is eight oh three. We'll close the regular session, go into the second session. Thank you all for staying. Appreciate it. If you do stay, we'll try to be out soon as we can.